I would like to call the meeting in order to verify the plans of the board's needs on the education and national agenda. And also please stand with questions. Flag is created. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart. Okay, we started off with a presentation on the music program options.
I would like to, we have our music stack over there. So I wanted to share with you a little bit what's in the packet and some conversation that's in there. And then afterwards, any of them are able to speak in terms of talking to the options or any of that. So there'll be that time called that. And I think my understanding is then that there's time for public comments. So there can be questions in this part of it, but there's also the actual items and proposal that goes on to. So just in terms of protocol, if I'm done, if you want to talk a little bit more about that piece of that, if that makes sense at all.
Okay, absolutely.
So as you know, we've been talking about a lot of different options as we look at our music programming. Some of this stemmed from last August. I've shared throughout the meetings that we held that we had two late hires in our music department last year with a music, middle school band teacher and our choir teacher who left for different positions. And at that time, because they were late summer hires, we knew at that point that we did not have enough opportunity to really look at the program to see what the staffing was and knowing that probably some changes needed to happen in terms of the amount of time allocated to what the teaching assignments were at that time. But that was a very late beginning from a school year standpoint and so did not make those decisions, knowing that we needed to do that. We were formally notified in January of this year that we would have a music teacher retirement. And soon after that, had gotten official notification, started working on what does that look like, as we do with any teaching position or any position really in the district. Anytime there's a vacancy, we look at what the media is, where we're looking at to post instead of just automatically posting for that. And that's what we did in this case. And we already knew a little bit that we were overstapped in some areas based on demand and need. And so instead of just automatically posting for that, we tried to look inside, what does that look like? How does that look like? And so we also, during part of that, we looked at what our offerings were, our staffing, and we also looked at how that looked like elementary, middle, and high school. We found in that process that there were offerings at our instrumental program at our elementary schools that weren't being offered exactly the same. And sort of dug a little bit into that, why that was. The experiences that our elementary students were getting from a standpoint of what was being offered to them and what was being missed and what was being pulled out was not the same. At the same time, we were looking at our middle school schedule and looking at some options of evolving that a little bit and looking at what that might be. And so I know that a lot of folks have said this seems to be just, you know, we need to look at only elementary or only at middle school, but the reality is K-12, as we do with anything in the district, the impact of it, especially with a program like music that is K-12. All of our programs are really K-12 without the exception of world language at this point. Everything is K-12. So while the impact on any one building might be greater than, the impact of an entire program is K-12. So in tonight's work pack, and I'm not going to go through every single slide, but there was some data presented because I think a lot of people have been talking about what have the program numbers been like over the years. In Infinity Campus, which is our student information system, we can really only go back to elementary numbers that are reported in there, that have been put in there back to 14, 15. So some of the numbers, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on implications, but I do think when we get to a program review, this is the time to really look at the data and decide what that means. So I'm not here to interpret a lot of the data tonight, but they are just numbers for people because people have been saying numbers or data or whatever it means. And so without really saying goals in terms of numbers going up or down, you know, it is what it is, but I do think that it was helpful tonight if people were wondering what some numbers are. So we look at, we offer our strings program starting in fourth grade and then band and strings in fifth grade. And I did want to point out, because I'm not sure if everybody was aware in it, for one year alone, I mean, it was my first year and I was, it was done prior to my coming, I was unaware, the reason, and that will become a little bit clear in a minute, is that we offered fourth grade band that year and fourth grade orchestra. And interestingly enough, you can see the data looks very differently from there on out in that year when fourth grade band and strings were offered. So that was something that people were wondering that was put forward that year. And I guess off to the right, there are just total numbers of students this year that are in the elementary instrumental music program there. The next slide really looks at middle school and it talks about sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. There was a beginning orchestra, beginning band. We've only run the beginning orchestra by itself because of the small number of students in the one year here. And I pulled out the sixth grade band in front of it a little bit, as you can look at some of the trends there with students. Those who are beginning band typically have not had band at all in elementary school. Every once in a while, you might get a student who wants to switch an instrument and wants to be in that, but for the most part, and that's offered first semester, so those students who decide to like beginning band can stick with it for second semester. We do see a little bit of a, well, I wouldn't say a little bit, we see a trend in the number of students who are in, who are starting in sixth grade that stick with band and the number of students overall that are starting band in sixth grade on this last year and that stuck with it second semester, that are just choosing to start in sixth grade. These numbers, and I'm not here to make any conclusions, it's just because we know people make choices, you know, as they go through the grades, but unless you know in fourth grade to fifth grade all the way up to 12th grade where we can provide that data, how many students, you know, stick with band or orchestra as you look at that. But wanted to also then provide the same information as we know that we're relatively, you know, stable in our enrollment, but we fluctuated especially at different grade levels at any given time, how many students are in a class. So the data that was given is in that year, how many students were in that grade at that time? And because if you, we do fluctuate from year to year in terms of that. So, and then the bottom chart that was provided in the packet was just as a percentage of that graduating class, just so we have an idea of how many students in any given year and any given grade are participating in either strings or orchestra. So the data that was there is just data that people have ever referenced it or want to make a look at that, but we definitely will use it when we take a look at a program review to decide when we look at trends, what we would expect. We would like to compare our data to other districts, you know, is that attrition normal? Is that what we expect to see? Where are some of the blips? Can we explain those? That's not the goal of tonight, is just to provide the data. So tonight, as we've talked about, we had the parent meeting on February 28th to talk about what the dilemma is. We had another board meeting on the 18th, the 11th, excuse me, and the 18th. The 18th was originally a meeting in which we were going to make a decision and decided to hold off for a couple of weeks so we could listen to more discussion and did not want to hold a meeting during spring break weekend, so that's why we find ourselves here. We do have some timing in terms of personnel that we have to get notices out so there can be an impact based on this. Also, our middle school and high school schedules right now are being held up in producing them, which is holding up a lot of different things that have domino effects on that right now. And so we can't really wait much longer to make a decision because all of the impact's based on staffing and where we put things, because we do have a lot of shared staff between buildings, even our elementaries and high school and a variety of different things. So going in tonight, what are some of the options for consideration? We heard that there was, you know, some, for a lot of people, to preserve elementary options when possible, that was clear. That there was also to reduce or remove the pullout model based on what we were getting, what people were being pulled out of, our students were being pulled out of. So that cannot continue in what those things were being pulled out of. And so that has to be something that we have to consider moving forward. We also were interested in with this new middle school schedule, what happens when we pilot lessons or instructions differently than we're currently doing? What does that look like? So those were three things moving forward to a decision that sort of came out over the meetings that we've held that people, I would say there was a majority of people that had those factors to consider in terms of options, right? So some of the input that we have collected, as I said before, through parents informational meeting, to board meetings, there have been a lot of emails and personal conversations with parents in the community, both by administrators, board members. Not all of them have just been at board meetings. Two PTO meetings tended to timeout, in which there was time correctly, in which input was allowed at both Edgerton and Hills Corners PTOs for anybody who is there to solicit some feedback there. There have been ongoing conversations with music teachers throughout, as we've been looking at processes. We have also been contacting other school districts, as well as the music teachers have been doing that, to see how they do that. And then we did do a survey. And I will again state that I did last time, not the best survey, probably weak in hindsight as everything was with the timeline that it was. But I think even last time sort of summarized it, regardless of the options, there were some commonalities on there, which is the first bullet point of that there was some commonality in trying to preserve elementary options when possible. So what we're looking at tonight, because there isn't a clear cut absolute in all of them, and I think the board talked about, can we do this or can we not do that? If we do that, tell us that that isn't the rule, but this is. And so when we looked at that, you will see tonight as we talk to what options a little bit later. In all of the research, I recognize that before my coming here, there was actually, so the previous superintendent, previous curriculum director, and previous K-12 music coordinator had actually in 2014 brought forward the same situation in terms of we can't continue pullout lessons anymore. So I came across those documents. They were in a memo to all parents in the district of June 9th of 2014, and it was also in a board packet on June 23rd of 2014. So I looked at that information a little bit to see what the basis was, why three different people at five years ago basically said we need to stop pulling out lessons in the elementary schools. As I was doing that and reading the letter from the superintendent to parents at that time, the part that you see circled in red there talks about there is a statutory requirement to have physical education three times per week. And I paused for a second because I recognized that we currently still do not have FIAED three times a week. So it was identified back in June of 2014 that we needed to get into compliance with elementary FIAED. And so as I'm getting ready to put this board packet together, I came across this memo that it was identified, but never resolved. So in putting together an option, actually, a third option that didn't get in the packet tonight, because we had paused and while our principals were on spring break and whatever, had to call them in and say, we have this dilemma, how will this now impact the music program? Because FIAED right now, we are non-compliant. So I contacted DPI to make sure that the statute I was reading was correct, and they said it is absolutely correct. It is not two minutes, two times one week and three times the next week. It has to be three times per week, every week. So after we talked with DPI and met with their elementary principal, we are meeting with elementary staff tomorrow morning to talk about that. The elementary principals have a couple of options which we think are viable, but we do have to resolve that. We can't continue to be non-compliant with the elementary FIAED piece of what this is. So that's sort of through a loop in the middle of last week when we were looking at options of not being compliant because our FIAED is part of the rotation of specials that we are looking at and that we have been doing. So in addition to pulling students out of FIAED as we've identified the last two meetings, we are also not for all children meeting the statutory requirement of three times per week. That's a problem. It's a really big problem right now. And that got in the middle of last week as I was getting ready to put this together, came across that. So it now becomes my issue because I won't continue to lead and be non-compliant with DPI. So thanks to Lynn and our elementary principals last week, as we reached out to many other school districts to see what they do, what are some solutions, how to resolve it, what does that mean for our specials, rotations, staffing, all of that. We think we have some good options that will be the least disruptive to that, but we have to move forward with that as quickly as possible. So I want you to keep that in mind as we were talking about this. And I am tonight going to share with you an option that we were ready to bring forward tonight, but had to pause it because of this finding last week. Because it was suggested or asked by a couple of board members about what happens if we have students choose, like we do in sixth grade and fifth grade, between general music or instrumental music. That was asked by a couple of people here. And so I had worked on a solution about what that looks like and had to pause it because now FIAED is a whole different, has to be addressed differently. We had, I had to pause that and not put it in a board packet because we promised the public we would get that board packet out earlier than normal last week. We said we would get it out on Wednesday rather than Friday. So I could not vet through that option because we have to talk with our elementary teachers as we come back today to see how we can resolve the FIAED situation. But I am going to share with you the thinking on that model to see if that has any bearing on options that the board considers tonight. And we, again, talked briefly with our elementary music teachers before this meeting to let them know about that. It was a thought that had crossed their mind and I will let them speak to any of those options that are later. So I will share with you what's in the packet, the two options and why they're in the packet, and then share with you the thinking on what was going to be another option, but where we're sort of holding right now because of the FIAED piece. So option A is before school and one of the things that we talked about, about keeping that in there. As it's done now, semester one is primarily with lessons. Semester two is where we start working with the ensemble. That could be, we can talk about how or where that is, it can be done the way that it is now, it can be rotated in there. We've been talking about since the beginning of the parent's meeting, there has always been tossed out this option of a band camp or boot camp that's always been out there with some options. We talked about last time that that band camp can really be added to any option. It isn't limited to just the second option that was there, but that was an option we could put in there. So we put it in here thinking that we've heard from people that that was a good idea regardless of what option we picked. So we put that in there to be able to create some more time or as we're seeing an uptick in students who are just starting in sixth grade, if that continues, that would give them that start before the school year to have an instrument rather than waiting till the first day of school in sixth grade. In terms of the, because of the tiered start here, if we have that, then we would have those students who would typically start beginning band, as you saw that number, would do that band camp, and we would combine them together right away, starting in sixth grade, instead of having really three tiered starts to it. That sort of becomes a scheduling problem when you have all of these entry points of trying to get some cohesion at that point. Some considerations, sorry. Some considerations that we have is, right now, with this option, the rotation for music is the same as it is now. So they would have every four days, 60 minutes of general music, and they would also have 30 minutes of instrumental music. So that's something to consider. If we wanted to, to help before school, you could have longer lessons, 40-minute lessons instead of 30-minute lessons. You really could feel a little bit of flexibility before school in terms of the length of lessons. Potential for multiple music teachers having to do before school because we're basically doing it all at the same time period, and we have two different elementary schools, so that would, it would require from a schedule standpoint, multiple teachers to do that. Fourth, music teachers from other buildings will travel to more buildings and could be less available before school. Remember, our elementary is before school is during the school day or when students arrive. So they may be less available during those times, it wouldn't be during class time, but they may be less available. There might be some challenges for our middle school and high school schedules for where we offer our band during the day because we couldn't offer first hour if we were expecting instrumental teachers to go and share the before-school time. And it is likely that all of the current music teachers could remain as close, assuming we don't have all of the numbers in from the middle school for registration and are still working on the high school numbers. The teaching assignments of what people teach currently would be changed from what they currently do. So that was option A that was put into the packet. Option B, again, we recognize that it, you know, the survey was hard to do that, but it did not seem like it was the most popular choice in there by far, but felt that we needed to put it in here to have a discussion on tonight. And in terms of looking at the disruption in some of the other pieces that it causes, both with relationships with students and being in there and us traveling, to not have it on there as a discussion point wouldn't be allowing it to say that it's totally off the table because the board has not yet taken the decision or evolved or any of those pieces. That's what tonight's about. So in this time, we would start out instrumental music in sixth grade. We would maximize whatever lesson times rather than traveling with the teachers and trying to maximize the middle school schedule of having lesson times there. We would have that band camp as we did in the first option, again, that option can really be given with any choices that the board selects. Some considerations for option B, we need to make sure that the general, the music curriculum is reviewed to make sure that students are exposed to instrumental music in the elementary schools, that all students are. And I know that they are variations, but it's a good time to review all of that curriculum. Students would not have to worry about what instructions or activities they're missing, if they're being pulled away from other activities, if they're before or after school because that, that conflict might not exist in elementary school. There is no value judgment as we're trying to pull kids from one area to another about they can be pulled from art because that's less important, or FIAED is less important, or whatever the case is. Consistent starting, we don't have that fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh point to try and figure out where all students come into. All the current music teachers will remain full-time. There will be changes to teaching assignments as before. And again, that number five has a caveat depending upon where sections from middle school and high school registration fall. And so another consideration is that students may not have been exposed to instrumental music skills and habits prior to middle school, and that they may not consider instrumental music because of competing options. And we've talked about that in terms of what that gives. I am going to briefly talk about this, this was not in the packet, but I, and I think I explained to you why I didn't put it in the packet, but because it was brought up by board members, I feel, I feel compelled at least to share with that. So currently, our students, this is a four, we have a four-day rotation, mostly by home room teacher, although we mix students up by instrument that may not go into our schedule per day here. And so I took actually the number of students at Hills Corners Elementary, just for an example, to play it through, of how many students are in each lesson and where they currently get lessons. So up there in the color-coded, light and darker color, that's the current rotation. So in a four-day cycle, in that hour, some students for a half hour get lessons and another group of students commits. There are eight different groups of lesson students. I put the numbers of actual students in those groups right now. So in this, so in this model, the students for Hills Corners Elementary, at least for the most part, pull out of library technology. That's not the case at Edgerton, which I think we talked about before. So in this example, the colors there are no longer by teacher. I'm going to use Hills Corners because mathematically it works easier. Let's say there are 100 students, right? And we have four color groups. It's not by home room teacher at all. We divide the kids by 25, 25, 25. And within there, there are some instrumental students and some non-instrumental students. And it's not by home room teacher, and they're not completely now either. So this would be taking it to the max of not organizing now. So I'm not in Mr. or Mrs. so-and-so's class, I'm in a blue group or green group or yellow group. So if I'm, I'm going to take the blue group up there, which right now has five violins for the first half hour, and there's four violins beyond, that's how the custom schedule is now. So that is nine students in that group of 25 that are taking an instrument, which means there are 16 students not taking an instrument. Yeah? So if we take that out, the blue group on day one will go to art for 60 minutes as they do now. On day two, all 25 of those students go to FIAED for 30 minutes. And then for the second half hour, the first five violins would go to instrumental music, while the other, general music and the other violins go to general music. On day three, all of the students go to library and the, at halfway through, they switch to technology. On day four, they all go to FIAED. The four students here who were instrumental students but were in general music here will now go up to have their instrumental lesson while the rest of the class is in general music. So students are now being pulled out, if you want, from general music. And they're making a choice, if I want general music or instrumental music half of the time. So in every four-day rotation, a student will get 30 minutes of general music if I'm an instrumental student, and 30 minutes of instrumental music. But that's the choice I'm making within music, within that time. If I'm a non-instrumental student, I'm going to give 60 minutes, as I do today, 30 minutes each time, twice a week, of general music. So the choice is within there is to pull out students or they make a choice with general music. So was developing this when found out about the FIAED thing, so did not, so I paused on this because I could not toss out an option, knowing we might have to toss this whole schedule out because we're not having enough FIAED. We believe right now that we have a solution that would not disrupt the special schedule. We're going to work with our elementary teachers over the next couple of days and the principals to sort of vent through what that looks like. So if that's the case, this would keep fifth grade lessons during the day. They get, they get a choice on one of those two days. Basically, whether they're being pulled out from something else in terms of that. So it keeps basically the rotation the way that it is now, the way that it's scheduled, the way that it is now, it doesn't change the elementary schedules. If you look at the overall music minutes that a student gets today, if they get 60 minutes in fifth grade, 60 minutes of general music and 30 minutes of instrumental music, if I'm an instrumental student, this schedule is 30 minutes of general music and 30 minutes of instrumental music. So the overall time is less right now in music, but it's the choice that people have asked about, I'm choosing what type of music they want in fifth grade, which is what they do in sixth grade. So the music standards would happen, which we need to make sure that they're being done that. We're pretty sure that we can ensure that they, the state standards that we have to cover can be done in both of those, and that's what that option would look like. So you don't find it in your packet because I could not get it out or ensure that that would be a viable option with everything that was brought out last week. So moving forward, we've said that regardless of action or decision or action that rotates tonight, there will be a program review. Lynn and I have a meeting with a facilitator next Wednesday to talk through a date and to go through that, because that's a program facilitation. We'd like to also do that with our arts and our world language programs because it should be done for all of our programs. And so we'll start with that process and get a date out as soon as we can meet with the facilitator. I think we need to have some increased K-12 collaboration with all of our teachers and all of our programs that are K-12, that could be increased to know what's happening at each of those next levels. We tried that last year between middle school and high school with our electives because we had a special electives night last year for the first time, and I think that really helped knowing so they could help advise students on what happens at the next level. And after, whatever it is, then we have to work with what the staffing is in order to make that program. So that's sort of what the options are. So I don't have a lot of questions at this point, or if you want to, any of the teachers want to share some information, so whatever.
Why don't we let them share, and then we can speak after that.
Oh yeah, you can see from there, I mean, whatever, it might be better just to speak, because if you're bad, it's to the camera, that's the only microphone we have right now in this room, so.
All right, good evening. As most, I'm Marvelite. I also live in Hills Corners, but I don't have to get my address. As most of you know and are aware, I am the elementary school instrumental teacher. I know I have taught many of your children, the school board members also. I started teaching instrumental music at 20%. The full-time teacher before me had a total of 35 students. This program has grown to full-time, including that I teach at Hills Corners, Edgerton, which told me 140 instrumental students. And then I also teach kindergarten general music classes, 200 students at Hills Corners Elementary. When I was first assigned to Edgerton, I taught before lessons. And I just wanted to share this because that's one of the options that's out there. Not many students had signed up, and as I was teaching before school, there were many absences. Thus, at the time then, it was tried and discontinued. Children come from multiple households and families with shared parenting, and they aren't always coming to school the same way or from the same place each day or even week. Many of my students go to the Y after-school program, and many of them stay till 6 o'clock, which does make a really long day for 10 and 11-year-old students if they start their day by 8 or somewhat before for lessons. I have had many students with special needs play an instrument, such as students with autism. I have also had a special stand created to hold up an instrument of a student that wanted so badly to play the trumpet but only had one hand. I communicate and collaborate with the fifth grade and the fourth grade teachers, which I feel, again, it's elementary, it's a little bit easier to do that, that this helps provide a very good foundation for a successful start. On July 31st, I was asked to attend a meeting and was told for the first time that there were, that there were some inequities at the middle school and the high school with the music teachers not all having the same number of classes, and that my kindergarten general music class, classes would be taught by someone from the middle school, and lessons would start in sixth grade. Well, the end result, and I know we've been pondering over this for quite a while, a productive and successful music program for elementary students is looking to be eliminated, which is shocking to me, it seemed to come awfully sudden. I know the inequity at Edgerton can be changed by administration to not have lessons during fayed or art, which, as you pointed out, at Hills Corners is not already believed in fayed or art also. I firmly believe that starting students early in the fourth and fifth grades gives them more opportunity to memorize, grasp, and practice note reading, which for some students is like a foreign language and is very difficult, the fundamentals of counting, et cetera, so when they get to the middle school, they come prepared and can play in large ensembles. I don't know why my successful program is considering to be eliminated because of inequities at the middle and high school. And I know that we're still having choices, and we have some more information tonight. Thank you.
I didn't know there was conversation. Is this okay? Hi, I'm Holly Dykstra, I'm the choir director at the high school and at the middle school, so I need my glasses. It's unfortunate, but I do. Thank you for the opportunity to reiterate my thoughts with respect to the idea of me stepping in to teach K-5 general music next year and considerations for future decisions with musical programming. When Dr. Olson and Lynn Roy mentioned the high probability of me teaching K-5 general music next year, it came as a surprise, and not something I'd expected to do, nor do I have even a slight desire to do. I understand that there's an FTE issue at play, and my schedule needs to be tweaked. And as I understand it, any additional high school or middle school classes for next year may not be an option mainly because it's too late in the game and/or hiring part-time people was concerning with respect to finding someone of quality, which I would beg to differ, I taught part-time for a long time, and I do consider myself a quality teacher, so I think they're out there, I think they can be found. Hopefully, tonight's meeting will create change that leaves more options to fill the FTE for the vocal choral music at the middle school or high school level, rather than me teaching K-5 general. I have some ideas for filling the FTE requirements for next year that I could knowledgeably and skillfully teach, and would like to share with you. I'm excited at the prospect of implementing either an additional musical theater ensemble class at either the middle or high school level, I know that's dependent on numbers, that's always our kids signing up, do we have the, you know, possibility for that? But I can tell you that even in teaching the two classes that I have of the musical theater ensemble has been so successful. It's great to see these kids do what they're doing, and they love it. I've got kids doing choreography on their own, I've just given them some basics, and to see them flourish and grow, so I'm hoping it grows, I hope it continues. In February, I began an audition to volunteer advanced vocal group called the Acoustics. So I volunteer my time, as well as do the 16 high school singers, to rehearse at 7:00 AM about one to three times a week. And I would love to see that as another elective option for next year. I'd also like to suggest adding a basic keyboard and/or fundamentals of music theory. I've discovered that most of my students and all my choirs are really in need of more basic music literacy, as you were talking about, they really need it, in order to read choral music. It's one thing to read band music, and another thing to read choral music, they're two completely different, almost completely different things. And usually, the kids that are in band are actually much more, they're more fluent. The kids that have been in band have, have definitely a better understanding of it, and they can read terms and symbols. However, the choral music aspect of it and reading that is, it's not, it's just not there. So I'm finding myself finding all kinds of different ways to help them become more fluent and literate. It's true that I possess a K-6 general music degree, and I taught it over 20 years ago, yes, I said that, part-time for about six years. It became clear early on that very young elementary age is not what I'm really set out to teach. I've taught middle school and vocal choral for over 23 years. It's what I know and I love to teach. This is my first year teaching high school, and I wasn't quite sure what to expect, but I absolutely love it. I love it, it's going very really well. I applied for middle or high school choral positions last year before I was hired at Whitnall, and I avoided all general music applications. So I don't believe I'm the candidate for that K position next year, the K-5. In addition, it also means I would travel to three schools, and I think I can speak on behalf of any of us teachers, that the idea of traveling to three schools can be quite hefty and burnout can happen quicker than we want. I know vocal and choral music. A little over 30 years ago, I was highly encouraged to get the K-6 general music degree because I'd have more options, but it wasn't because I, what I wanted to do. If I would get all over again, I would have completed the 612 call only. I love teaching teenagers choir and being invested in their drawing music reinforcement here at Whitnall, in this program, I'm excited to see it grow, I hope that it does. In conclusion, I hope there's another way to find the right person who loves general music and is a great fit for K-5, so thanks for listening.
We put together a little list of pros and cons of both of these options as you see it as secondary teachers. I'll speak to option A, and then Katie, did you want to speak to option B?
Sure.
Okay, so option A, continuing in the elementary school and getting it before school. So as far as some pros that we came up with, and we tried to be as objective as possible and just present this as, you know, facts as we see them without putting much judgment in there. All instrumental music begins at the same time, so the band and the orchestra, you get rid of the fourth grade for one, fifth grade for the other. Early exposure, that's certainly a good thing. There's the potential for increased contact times compared to the current setup if, and I know that there are some concerns about students maybe getting to their lesson on time, things like that, but if, if students are able to get to their lesson on time, then you wouldn't have to eat that transition time, moving from, moving from class into the lesson and back, things like that. Okay, so with secondary teachers also being at the elementary schools to, to help out with that element of the program, there would be a level of familiarity with myself, with Eric, with Katie, in addition to Margot, which hopefully could then lead to some better retention across the different levels. It would provide an opportunity to rethink how we recruit students initially and approach that as more of a legal endeavor rather than an individual endeavor, because historically that's sort of all fallen on Margot's shoulders. So if we can spread that out, and we could all be a part of that, we could, we can share the, and the potential to hire a general music teacher, that sort of speaks to what Holly was just, was just mentioning. Now, as far as some cons of option A, and this is sort of what Margot was speaking to just a moment ago, meeting outside the school day, we are a little bit concerned that any time that you take something out of the school day that used to be a part of the school day, does that change parents and does that change students' approach to that as far as the seriousness with which they approach that endeavor? Does it become an extracurricular, or does it become something that they're really truly invested in? That's, that's something to consider. Increased travel for all the teachers, which would mean less availability for us, for our students, and that's something that Dr. Olson spoke to a moment ago. The, the team teaching at the middle school and the high school, that's been very successful, and that would, that would, I don't know if it would go away entirely, but it would be a smaller, a smaller extent. And, and then we just had some questions about equity and access to that delivery of instrumental music, as far as transportation, as far as, you know, kids getting there on the bus, getting there early, things that we've mentioned before, but that is a legitimate concern that we, we would definitely need to think through. And then option B?
Option B, starting in sixth grade, some of our pros that we put together is that not only instrumental music would start at the same time, but choral music would start as well all at the same time in sixth grade. Students in sixth grade currently, and if they started in sixth grade, would have band and orchestra two or three times a week, depending on that really big schedule. Small group instruction would also happen once a week as well. The band team teaching could continue. Students are more likely to continue because they don't have the building transition, they're starting in sixth grade, and the more likely to, the retention could be better there. Some cons that we developed was, there's a later start chronologically. As we all know, research says that the earlier you start anything, the better it is, so they would be starting a year later. The possibility of more elective choices in sixth grade could maybe conflict with what students choose to take. Would we have fewer kids taking music or not? Not sure. Kids have to take music in sixth grade, so that's kind of a tricky question. We also did some research of what other districts are doing currently, and a lot of them are tiered, a whole bunch of them. We know that Franklin next year is starting band and orchestra in sixth grade, they're currently in fifth. Waukesha starts in sixth grade as well, Beloit and Kenosha start in fifth grade, there's some schools that start in fourth grade as well. Subcree starts band in sixth grade, they're a very outstanding music program on the stage as well. And Eric?
We just had some universal thoughts as well, just some overarching ideas. As Dr. Olson had mentioned, we think the summer program is a good option, no matter what we go with, and I know they mentioned the band, one, and I would also like to do an orchestra one as well, I think that would be a great opportunity. Yeah, for beginners or even firsts, we consider continuing, just for some extra, extra time, extra lessons. And as Dr. Olson also mentioned, we would all like to take a more collaborative approach in recruiting students and fitting them with instruments, so that we have balanced instrumentation and involving parents as, as already is done. I think that, one more thing is that we all like the idea of keeping it during the day, I don't know if the option's on the table, but the last one that you brought up at the end there, we, when we're in that, we all seem to be in favor of that one as well, keeping it during the school day.
Before I, yeah, before I'm done with this piece, I wanted to just remind folks that this did not stem from because there was like, we don't like elementary music, or we need to stop offering it, or the program wasn't there, anything. And this is the part that I said for a long time, that it's not typically a public discussion because this, it is not a budget discussion. It really has stemmed from staffing, and we can't publicly talk about that, and we've heard from the staff themselves, and we have staffing issues that we're looking at. You've heard the word co-teaching mentioned, you've heard a lot of different things that are out there, and so part of that ultimately is why this became more public of a decision than ever before, is any of the decisions that we make on programming, whether we keep or don't keep, is that we know it was related to staffing. And so I want us to be fully aware of that, that that's not a public decision, staffing, there are HR pieces that are related to that. And so that's really where the impetus of this came from, it did not come from we want less elementary or more anything, it had to do with the amount of staffing we have for the amount of teaching assignments. And so the present, the options that are presented continually and continually and looked at were to try to retain as much of the programming as possible with having the least impact on staffing. That is where this has come from and where it finds itself today. And anybody who else thinks differently has not been listening to the information that's shared, it is not a budgetary situation. I would love to see the music program increase and expand. We have one choir and a half for a long time, and if kids can in a seven-hour day add a second choir to their schedule, that would be great. There are some realities with that, and that's what I want us to be able to say, is that at the end of the day, there are seven hours in our high school schedule, and so we can look at some of those pieces. I'm trying to be able to say that we will build it, they can come with a schedule that they have to, in order to pick a second choir option or something else, as much as our kids have very few study calls anymore, because that's not an option, we want them to take as many classes as possible. So we are trying to maximize the number of classes that students take, we want them to take a music class rather than a study hall. We have very, we have fewer and fewer kids in study halls because we want them to get out there and take as many classes. This is really coming from a staffing decision, and that's the impetus of it, and that's the timing of why we need to make a decision of what that looks like. And I want that, that's, I need to be able to say that over and over again, that this did not come from any other reason and why it was made public than the staffing implications.
Okay, so you go down the table.
I wish we had to figure it out, a key question in time, and then I'll turn.
Is the mic real?
Oh, I just said I wish we had more time to consider the type of question on that with impact, but I don't, I don't understand that we could be very busy. Next, Monday, we have preliminary non-manual lessons, we haven't told me 15 for final ones, but we have to bring that, and so the timeline of staffing, the other part of it is, we're holding up every building's schedule right now until we know what that looks like for next year, when we can offer, because most of the folks up there, Holly, Mike, Eric, and Katie are in two different buildings, and so until we know what it looks like next year, our middle school and high school, and what implications that has, because our high school principal has to run a schedule, and high schools run course conflicts, and who can't do what, so there's lots of implications that we're already weeks behind in terms of that.
But it's illegal, the first part is illegal.
Statutory requirement that we provide preliminary non-manuals by a date on the calendar, that is non-negotiable, that's not this local board's decision, it's the state statute.
I do have a question, and if you could just give us a little brief overview of what is included in general music.
Are you talking at the elementary level?
At the elementary, at the elementary. A sampling of major music, what younger students gave you, you don't really get much into reading per se, we don't have a lot of reading capacity, we can do strategies on that, instrumental playing, so in fourth grade they learn corners, fifth grade, I have friends who do qualities, and then kindergarten through third grade, they do various oriental instruments, which are xylophones and percussion, so we do instrumental playing, rhythm reading, and then fourth and fifth grade, we do note reading, note naming, which note naming and note reading are different things. They do more with note names with me, and they really start moving.
They do more of the no names with me, and they really start moving into no reading with the recorder and with Marko in their private, their own small class. We do listening, various segments from cultures, from time periods, discussing, analyzing, learning how to talk, stuff, and sophisticated and active way. I do lots of group plays, and I always do a lot, I do a lot of folk dancing, choreography creation. We spend a decent amount of time preparing for a grade level performance every year, which we do a lot of kind of songs for the grade level. So singing, instrument playing, listening, analyzing, moving.
We have a wide variety of, yes. Okay, and then in middle and high school?
Sixth grade, we have one general music class that's offered as a one semester class. It's called Music Lab, that this year, Eric taught that one semester, and Katie's current and future did. I taught it last year. So if you want to talk, these are the types of things that we're working on.
Sure, we decided to do a lot of composition activities this year, so Katie and I have been collaborating on those. We did a song project, we did some technology composition with GarageBand.
Some music mixing.
Creating a rap.
Commercial jingles.
A lot of stuff like that.
Yeah, a lot of technology-based composition kind of things.
And then at the high school, we have three general music classes. Two of them are on track, there's a music production one and music production two, rock band one and rock band two. Eric, you can talk about any one.
So music production is pretty focused on producing music, as the class title suggests. A lot of composition of that as well. So learning how to use the software to compose music, mix music, things like that. We respond to music as well, so listening to music and describing it, analyzing it, things like that. Not so much performance in high class, more of that kind of stuff. Other than connecting to time periods and history as well with that. And then rock band is more performance-based, general music, where they learn guitar, bass, drums, or vocals in a band setting. And we also do lots of responding to that too, some historical connections as well, and also some compositions. That one's pretty wide.
And then we also offer advanced placement music theory, the curriculum for which is obviously driven by the college board and what's all in the course description. So that, that class, it's a more deep dive into sort of structural building blocks of why music sounds the way that it does. Study of form, study of harmony, study of compositional devices. We do a lot of peer training in that class, and that all points toward the PE exam.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. Very informative. So that was my question. I, as I said before, I am not in favor of having kids pulled out of classes for bands or instruments. But I'm really curious about that third option that Lisa talked about. I think that might be a really good solution, because it is all music-related and I would be more centric than that.
Yeah, I have to bear that sentiment, because I'm not in favor of pulling out of something that isn't the same relation. If we're going to pull out of general music to focus on something specific, and it flows with the schedule, I know we haven't, you got the specifics, we got the whole PE thing, but that'd be the only type of thing that I'd be okay pointing out. Other than that, I'm not down to keep the program to the same, just point out of whatever it is we determine to be less than important at that point.
I have a quick, it's just a clarification, that third option where it wasn't really presented, but everybody here seems to like it, and the parent or the staff, why isn't that viable with the PE option? I didn't understand that. It looks like it's just pulling out of the general music. How, what is the interrelation with PE there? There's still like three names up there. I miss, and I apologize if everybody else understood, but I don't get how PE goes into that one.
Thank you.
So Lou, why do you, in the data, I need this, an emotional issue like this, and then you need to look at the data, because emotions are all over the place, right? It looked like there was a big drop off in fourths, fifth grades. You've taught, you've been there, what's your reading?
I think there's probably a myriad of reasons. When you did look, you looked at those graphs that I had looking down, so you looked at like fourth grade in 2014, twenty-fifth grade in 2015, sixth grade. That big drop from fourth grade strings to fifth grade strings, you could attribute, you'd have to like go and survey every kid that went through the program through all those years. But I suspect that you were looking at, if you look at fifty some kids starting, and then the next year it's down to twenty. Some of those kids might have gone and taken a band instrument instead of an orchestra instrument. Some may have just not continued at all. So we probably have a couple of different ways that it could have gone. So that big drop to me suggests that they're probably, Mark, you have to speak this above too, that they probably have a significant amount that switched from the orchestra to the band instruments, give them the band instruments and starting in fifth grade, so you didn't have a whole comparison.
We're not going to say losing, we couldn't be, oh, we're losing some, when someone chooses a different.
If you look at fifty, not just nineteen or whatever.
Let me translate this. Okay, and then Lisa, we've gotten several emails that said, just hire a teacher, that'll solve, that'll pair problems. Is that, is that a true?
I wish, I've managed one by my desk, I wish I could do it and just say that was the answer. And that's why it's hard to read emails and say that I have a personal agenda here other than just hire a teacher and that I've been trying to hold back things. The reality is, is that we have, we have more staff in teaching sections. And I would love to say someday that we will build it and they will come so we can do that. And when we look at programming and what it means to be a full-time teacher, we have formulas in human resources right now that determines what percentage contract that people get. And right now, we need to, we need to play that across the board. We have to be equitable to all teaching staff. That is one thing when we look at employment law and all of that, to be able to look at that. So moving forward, as I said, we knew that in August of 2018, we knew that in some other piece of it in that area. And so for me to blindly just hire and ignore the fact that we're overstaffed could leave us open for others to, for others to file something to us by saying, file agreements, by saying, you are getting a contract for not equitable work. I don't like compliance, I'd love to live in the creative world constantly. But with this job and this title, also comes obligations to make sure that we are compliant and meeting some of the statutory requirements. So in terms of just hire a teacher, absolutely, but it would be short-sighted to just hire and ignore the fact already that we have some things that we need to fix to make sure we're there. And that's why buffering it or having a plan moving forward is say, I've said that, short-term, we can figure it out. But long-term, we have to understand what that means in terms of implications, or we're setting ourselves up to be open in terms of what that looks like on a staffing perspective.
Thank you. Couple questions. So touching on the PE, how soon do we have to change it? Is that something we have to do with streaming or wait for the next calendar year?
Talking with Mr. Diaco, we will, for the rest of this year, we have to make sure that students are not being pulled out at FIAID, because some of them, they only have one time with FIAID, which is definitely not. But for the rest of this, we're not changing, so it will be for the start of nineteen twenty, as I talked to the PI about that piece of it, so, yep.
When you looked at, or when you talked about the third possible option? So splitting the music classes, is that going to bring in, I guess, how does, how does the teaching work? Is that something that the high school teachers are going to give priority?
No, so we actually briefly talked about it, about Monica before that, and Monica said at some point a couple of weeks ago that sort of came to them in terms of what that might be. So I don't know if we sat in the twenty minutes before and sort of figured it out, but it would be basically the situation we have now, with staffing does it. But instead of being pulled out of whatever they're being pulled out of, the staffing still works with the same rotation. So it would have virtually the same rotation, the same people doing it, but they're just coming out of general music rather than the other things that they might be comfortable with.
Okay, and then kind of circling back to some of the things that Dexter brought up, talking about wanting to have more choir classes and stuff. Are the things in the high school already set?
Yes, those new course proposals are due in October. They can get that through the board and the board approves them, remember, in November, December, because the board has to do that. So any new course proposals, they've done that, the board approves them. So in January, they're in the course catalog, so that gets distributed at the end of January. High school students have a chance to look at that. We have our eighth grade registration information night for parents. And then students are, our students from high school are already registered for this year. We're waiting to put together a schedule right now, which we have a couple of kind of different ones going.
So, and then versus at this point, we're looking at the nineteen twenty ones. Can I ask you a question too? So you were saying, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to make this personal, but just kind of, you said that you really don't want to teach general music to the elementary, that's?
All right, it's not what you want to.
Okay. Would, I guess, part of all this other thing is, you know, wanting to get to K-12. So in looking at this, we, you know, we don't want to lose the talent that we've hired into the school. Is this something that if you had to do, you'd rather step back and take a part-time job in the meantime until things got figured out?
Do you want to step back and quit though?
No, just step back from the full-time, the full-time part of it.
No. No, do you want to step back and quit?
Okay, that's just.
Well, I'm intrigued by option C. I was disappointed and confused when things went from six things to discuss down to two, and I'm not sure how that happened. Being a member of the board, I kind of would have expected to be involved in that, but I don't know why that didn't happen. And I found myself looking at an undesirable option versus an unacceptable option. And I would like to be put in those positions. I'm glad that you brought option C. I don't know if you're bringing that up as a, as a serious, that it has serious potential or not. I have kind of wondered from the beginning whether we're pulling out from anything other than music, but I just, my mistake for not saying something, I just assumed that there was a reason for it because of contact time requiring music or something like that. Is there contact time requiring music and art like there is in PE? That's what I thought. So my question for K-five music teachers is, how do you think pulling students out for thirty minutes of your sixty minutes would A, affect your class, and B, affect the students that are being pulled out for what you need them to grasp?
Like that, girls mentioned, I kind of talked about this a couple of weeks ago, but it wasn't like, wasn't brought to my head as an option, like until like right before we started. So I haven't had really any time to like write anything down or like seriously consider. I would say that I am in favor of option three. It will be a change in how I structure my three classes? Yes, but it allows my students to still have instrumental lessons as part of their school day. And Marko and I, I'm going to be able to work together to make sure that we're covering kind of similar things at some point. So the flow of our training models of PE, we have like the two levels. I hope that when they're in my class on day one and they go to her class on day three, it would be a very similar content at that time, just with the exception that they have an instrument in their hands to not find.
So it may actually enhance those students for what you're, that's what I was getting at.
I think it has the potential to, yes.
When you were describing what you do in class, these students, I thought the instrumental students might actually have an advantage there, which is nothing wrong with.
And I'm, like I said, I'm more than willing to work with Marko as well, so the department can maybe talk about some key strategies and ideas and how to make that work really well for our students.
So right now, Margot, per student, how much time do you get per student? Or, you know, each time a student, how many minutes do you get with an instrumental student, you know?
Thirty minutes, usually, every four days, thirty minutes every four days.
And this would change how, it would change?
It would have less general.
Less general music, but they would still have thirty minutes of instrumental music per four days, okay? And is there a reason why, I mean, to me, it seems like a win-win, but would even be, another win seems to me would be if we could expand it to fourth grade, like I had mentioned in a previous meeting. Is that viable to expand it to fourth grade? And it doesn't have to just be, so right now, we have strings in fourth. We're talking about limiting strings in fourth, but keeping strings in band in fifth. Why can't we expand band to fourth and keep strings in fourth? And if there's an option to add, of course, as Devin did in a previous meeting, I'm, you know, that might show up.
I do know when we did try it for that one year, part of it, the numbers grew, and I was assigned to teach, you know, the kindergarten general music. So like my schedule couldn't expand to take on more students, more times.
I got you, sure.
Okay, that was part of it, and there are a few instruments in fourth grade. Like an example we used the other day was like the trombone. Your arm might not be long enough and they don't fit the trombone to the size of the length of your arm. So there are a few of those instruments, but then again, like clarinet, trumpet, that would work. But it was kind of a combination and where I, with my assigned area, could it expand?
Sure. So for this option C proposal, would Margot still be full-time instrumental?
So I want to just go back to what she said, so that year that there was fourth grade and fifth grade band, we're at one hundred and twenty-seven, so the number of students didn't, like they didn't.
Well, but for the future, we talked about, should it be continued because it was a good response? Well, I don't know, I mean, it never really.
Yeah, so is, in option three, is Margot stay full-time instrumental?
I can't talk staffing and I pray for it.
Okay, well, my goal is to keep her full-time instrumental, but to try to see, yeah. So, okay, so I'll, I'll talk what I'm going to say then. I want to know why, it doesn't sound like pulling a student out of general music would be a problem for anybody. I would like to, my, right now, the way I see preferences and with the limited stuff we can discuss, personnel and all that kind of stuff, I would like to see not only strings stay in fourth grade, but band go, add it to fourth grade. Do music, general music pullouts only, and we need to add a teacher, add a part-time teacher, and we need to fill up FTEs for the other remaining teachers, do more co-teaching. That's what I propose.
So John, you asked why the option zero. They were there based on the discussion during the last board meeting. And I said that for a fact, we're looking to try and narrow focus to something that would be acceptable for all board members at that point. So that's an idea of where to go to not because we have, and having six completely different options, building a narrow focus, right? So based on the conversation we had and the feedback we heard, the thought of keeping it in elementary school and only after the year before and after school was acceptable to, and that's part of that. You mentioned why as a board, we can't have a walk-in call and have, make these decisions outside of a meeting. So that's why every board member will contact and say, are we okay? Now, the packet went out at the beginning of last year, so there was time to respond to whether it was Lisa or me, say, hey, how did we bring up these two options, you had any questions? Instead of doing that here, because that would easily answer the board. And changes could have been in between the people, I questioned it, or whatever it is. So that's the bad piece.
But I can respond to that.
So I'd like to have my time, so I didn't interrupt your time.
We just interacted some stuff, so I'd like to.
Maybe the same to me, and your time.
Okay, go ahead.
Margot, the thirty-minute time, that includes travel time?
They're at my, let's, okay, they're fifth grade, they're promptly there in my room by eleven o'clock, and then they leave at eleven thirty. They're promptly there in my room by 11 o'clock and then they leave at 11:30. So it's a 30 minutes. They're there within 30 minutes. And then my next group is just right there at 11:30 and they go to 12. Same thing with fourth grade.
So you actually, they were actually practicing for 30 minutes?
They're in my room right, well, I mean, they have to put their instrument on.
Well, that's my point, so how much time do they actually practice?
No, it's 25 minutes.
So 25, okay, okay. Because there's been talk before that it may be close to 15 or 20 minutes. I just want to make sure I'm on the same page with you on that. Now, I guess I'll go back to you. So if you look at the band participation, we're talking about, we've spent all this time talking about something that affects, that involves a high point 15% of our student population, right? You mean across the board, we're talking about 15% of our student population involved in some sort of musical program. So, I think we need to keep that in perspective, that if we're gonna look at continuing to grow it, we have to have a larger portion of just 15% involved in it. If we want to really build the program that everybody says they want to have. So, I really like the idea of pulling out of general music. I don't know that starting that in the fourth grade right now makes sense. Maybe we can try it a few days, see how that goes and move on. I think if we can make it work with the Fayette and everything else. And you had asked about the Fayette portion, right? Essentially, we weren't sure how that was gonna be resolved last week. So by the time the packet had to go out, we didn't have those answers. There's been work done in between and tried to clear up some of that to see if this is feasible. At this point, it does look like it is, which is why we presented it tonight before a vote was taken, right? Instead of saying, oh yeah, we want this other option, but we wanted to get it out tonight so at least the board members can think about it, discuss it, consider it, and make a choice. Now, I just, we really appreciate, you know, the feedback and the attendance and the conversation, right? And that's ultimately what we want and we hope is that after tonight, the same engagement stays, whether it's to band, music, or whatever, right? We keep the conversation going, but what do we want? What do we really want? How do we define this program? And not just for band, as Lisa mentioned, arts or world language, whatever it is, right? We need this engagement, we need to build it. So if it takes something like this to get people involved in the conversation, that's what we're always looking for. So please, keep contacting us, it's what we want. You know, we hear from a wide range of opinions on whatever topic it is, but all the information goes into our decision-making process. So thank you for taking the time to do that. With that, anybody else, John?
Yeah, so, that came out Monday. I was on college visits all week and I didn't open my computer once. So I got to that more recently than Monday. I just think that as the, as the, and you know me, I absolutely don't participate in a walking forum. I don't like it when people, regardless of what the group text is about, when people respond to the whole group, that can be considered a walking forum, I don't do that. So, I appreciate that, but when those, when those options came down to those two options, I did not see that as kind of embodying the balance of what the majority, of what my thought was on the vibe that the majority of the board was finding, except.
Sure, and really, it was option A who was what most board members, right? Option B is... Exactly, and we, again, we pieced it from the other options, right? It can still be refined.
Yes, to that point, and that was really what it is. I think we lost last week saying what goes in the packet because there wasn't, we didn't take a vote, we didn't even do that. And so, understand that those options, this was one of the first times putting forward a board proposal where there wasn't this clear option. It was never meant to be either or, because I think Johnny would actually said, well, can you tell us what actually we can't be done or what can be? And like I said, like, there's a domino effect every once, so it's sort of like this mix and match. If you do before school, then you can't do after school because now you, right? So, this was not meant, it was to create, it is a very unique proposal in which there still will be discussion. And I'm guessing that the proposal will be something different. That's what I'm saying, is that we knew going into this, there was not a clear cut option that we could all agree upon. So I want to be clear that this is not the typical one for people to say that they were, you know, one way or the other, that that was never the, because I was not going to make that decision.
But that's how the team crossed, if you have a choice of today, it would be...
I get that that's how the process is, but I want you to understand that that was never the goal of that. It was never the goal of it, that I can't do 24 different actions. And it was totally to be a discussion point and...
It's just, it's just that there's a board of seven and I felt like there was a board of one going on there and I'm not gonna handle that kind of practices. But I understand where you guys were coming from. And I do appreciate the work you guys did. It's not like you were just kind of hanging out, throwing spaghetti on the wall, see what's good, so... But I was just surprised to see it and I did not realize that, that it wasn't being presented as a this or that, let's vote.
And that's what, that's what's hard about a board packet. When there's information and the Fayette stuff, the non-public is a very, and that was the challenge of all of that, right?
Yeah, but just a simple sentence in there saying, starting point for discussion are these two options. You know, and I mean, and we're not permitted to this, would have alleviated some of that, I think, in my opinion.
Just to say something, you went out, I looked at an email on the 26th. You chose not to read it until a couple of days ago. That's on you for not checking your emails. It's not that hard to check an email, reading's better. No, 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 we're gonna talk about, we didn't have information at the time. And the item on the 26th, I didn't say that. No, you said, I didn't check my email all week. Say that you couldn't respond to something and then with some sort of swipe, it's not true. So we're getting off the beaten path here, but what I, this address, when you addressed...
Okay, but what I said was that, yes, I didn't check it until more recently. I didn't read that, I saw it. I didn't read it until more recently, but I was still surprised. And it wouldn't have mattered if it was last Monday or three nights ago. I was still surprised to see it went down to two options and felt excluded from the process. And I realized that we can't do a walking forum. I'm not gonna repeat everything that I said before, but I don't really need the advice.
I think the other, the other thing to note is, so normal, this would be discussion and action item, right? And we wouldn't have time for presentation, you know, that. So, like we did two weeks ago, where we adjusted format. We wanted to have a presentation and discussion before even, if you notice, there isn't a written... No, but to that point, we don't have a written motion for option A or option B. We're not recommending that anyway. And it doesn't say here that it is. It's just, these are two alternatives. We'll have a discussion, come up with a motion, and then we'll decide. Okay. So, anyone else have a thought?
Lisa, I need to ask a third kind of question. So, where this is a staffing issue and the reason we're being asked to have a vote on either option A or B, is preliminary notices over for... So, if I'm remembering correctly, that means that there is still time so that you don't have to act further if things change. Between the time of preliminary notice goes out and the next deadline, according to the rule.
Yep, so May 15 statutory, our nearest board meeting to that is May 9th, which final notices go out. And so, it's often common that we do have more preliminary non-negotiables and then if you have that extra time to be able to figure out some things, then you have a more accurate count in terms of if you have that. So, that's correct, from statutory, preliminary non-negotiables will go out and then final non-negotiables no later than May 15th. Typically, you don't hold a special board meeting for that. So whatever our closest one is, maybe, whatever that one is.
So then it follows, then it's followed then, that in that time, more information about the Fayette scheduling and consequences and how that might fit into the music program and what we could accommodate at that time to be decided. So the third option...
Yeah, right now, right, right, correct.
So the third option could still be here.
And I think it's viable tonight. I think that that third option, and I think you can speak to that, I think the third option is viable tonight. It does tell us pretty much what we have to do with our Fayette, which is a viable solution. And I think our elementary principals are comfortable with it. I know that one of them had a preliminary conversation with staff. I think they're comfortable with it. Lynn and I are comfortable with that decision in terms of, I think I is comfortable with that decision. But it does say that that's the decision that we go with, which means that if that's the decision with Fayette, how we go to resolve it within a week, then the current specials rotation can stay as a four-day rotation. Because one of the options is go to a five-day rotation, which Fayette's three times. You would have to look at Fayette staff, you could, a lot of different options that are included with that. We think we have a solution that would not impact that.
So this is by no means the final, final, final word.
It isn't, but you have to, but you have to give more. You can't not give a preliminary and then give a final. Understand that you have to do that, you can scale back on the non-negotiables you can add to the non-negotiable.
So that's why this is truly a staffing issue at this point.
Absolutely.
Okay, so it sounds like that before we come to action, they're creating a motion for the new option, potential C.
What the board wants to put, again, what those options were. You can have that discussion after attendance, but I'm letting you know that that's a viable option. It does, the only thing is, is that, which is where I think administration is leaning toward resolving the Fayette dilemma right now. But it does tell us that that's the answer that we would do to resolve the Fayette piece with.
Can we go back on the chair?
I have my glasses now.
Okay, any, this is the last thing as a board will discuss the vote. Any other...
Where do you vote then?
Oh, you have to, you'll have discussion after someone makes a motion and second. There's discussion before a vote.
Then did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I think everybody covered the various points and the various requirements pretty thoroughly. The Fayette, I just want to be clear that elementary principals have worked out a Fayette solution that does not interfere with that option C, but everything is handled out of order, which is why I was thinking it's so late. But I'm most comfortable with option C because I think it sort of kind of keeps that earlier start in place without being intrusive in other areas and pulling out from areas where we quite practically shouldn't have been pulling out from, in many cases. So, I'm most comfortable with that, myself.
Okay, if no one else has a comment, we'll move on to four. Okay, so we'll move on to the fourth comment from the audience regarding agenda items per policy. Zero one six seven four three, this is the intent of public participation is permitted. Comments are limited regarding agenda items, any one having legitimate interest in an agenda item participate. Attend as much as registered their attention to speak or not on their arrival agreement. Participants are to preface their comments by announcing their name and address and group affiliation appropriate. Comments are limited to three minutes unless you send a report to the president and local participants may speak more than once at the same time. And comments are limited to the board, no person in the address or question of board members or staff individuals. So first is Jennifer.
Where do you...
Actually, if you stand right here, because then the cameras are going this way. If you come on this side.
Okay, I'm getting a message. Jennifer Pratt, my address is 11410 West Guy's Avenue, Hills Corners. I've been to the prior two meetings here to hear the discussion and I've decided to speak up tonight just so everyone can hear my background and my perspective on this. I did email the board over the weekend. With my point of view and my children's point of view, I've had three sons through the Whittaker School District. Two started band in fifth, continued through high school, wanted it in fourth grade, decided strings weren't for him, so he had the opportunity to try the band in the fifth and again, continued through high school. Two of my three students, they've continued in college in one passion or another. And I believe as a parent that that passion was developed in the elementary level. They didn't have the hormones, the emotions, the class schedule stuff that comes as soon as you hit sixth grade. They had an opportunity to ease into it, they had general music. They got, they got to try this in a non-threatening way, unlike middle school. We all know that's hard, harder for some kids than others. And I wanted to just not get my perspective on this. I'm a parent, I, you know, have different feelings than they do. I actually called each of my sons, none of them live with me now, to get their perspective. The older one, 29, I really don't remember, but hey, I know I took private lessons outside. To me, that was an influence from the lessons in school. The other two were adamant, especially the one who's a juror now in college, about the experience he had in taking music in elementary school. They would be very disappointed to see the violin or orchestra or instrumental or band going. You know, we eliminated you there, it was a strong foundation. They developed the passion and kept that up. I also see the advantage of, at that age, there's so much more content involved than typically there is in middle school. So you get to help them learn how to balance, I have to make a choice here. Do I go out, I have to practice my lessons, I have homework. How do I fit in this extra thing? So you're actually building those choices too, never mind the developmental aspects of it that many studies show. So, I was pleased tonight to see that there was an option C. I hope it does start in fourth, at least with strings, and then fifth. And then, as the vision and mission of the whole program is developed, then it can be adjusted. Would not want to see a knee-jerk reaction saying, we have this issue, we can't, we can't, but what do we do? Up until tonight, I felt, and I put this in the email, it was always, we can't do this, instead of how can we make this work, it was, it won't work. So, we need to be problem solvers and how can we make it work to meet the needs. I probably ran out of time, but one last thing, you kept referring to, we have parent meetings and parent surveys. I'm no longer a parent, I'm a student here. I did not receive a survey, I did not hear about the February 20 meeting. The way I found out about this was a side comment on talk radio that, hey, this might be going on. And then I found out, I looked online and it was. So I wasn't included as a parent or a taxpayer in any of this. So I made sure I was at the board meetings to give my opinion out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marty?
Okay, my name is Marty Schmidt, 5545 South 110th Street, Hills Corners. I am here today to ask the board to please reject and override option A and B. This, of course, these remarks were prepared before there was an option C. I will have to say, option C is the least unsavory of the options that were there and it sounds like it could be doable. So I'm more for that. Because option A and option B were two false choices given to us by the administration regarding band and orchestra at the elementary level. After one parent meeting and two board workshops, parents and board members as well have made it pretty clear that we do want something more than option A. And then, option B is pretty much a straight-up insult to anyone who has taken the time to voice their wishes on this matter. No one wants to cut band and orchestra at the elementary level. No one is interested in that. And to be honest, this really shouldn't even be an issue. This was a solution in search of a problem. I think that, you know, we, people have, administration has talked about, well, this is a staffing issue, this is a budget issue, this isn't something that the public needs to know. Well, I have to tell you, the public are taxpayers, we are taxpayers. This should be an issue for us. We are, our taxes are going to fund the schools and to fund the staffing. This is our business, okay? So board members, please don't forget, you were all elected to represent the public. You were elected to represent our wishes and to also oversee the administration. The administration answers to you, not the other way around. I know there's a way that we can retain the current level of instruction. Again, this was written before option C. Option C sounds good. Just please don't let this be yet another erosion of the classes, programs, activities, and events that once made our district one of the best in the area. Please don't deny our district's children the opportunity to enjoy band and orchestra at the elementary level. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna?
I'm Donna Murphy, 5361 South 121st Street, Hills Corners. I'm speaking to you tonight as a former parent of children that attend the Whittaker Music Programs, an retired Whittaker teacher, a current substitute teacher, and taxpayer. So I think I am one of few that has music programs of all kinds. So I think I am one of few that has music programs at all sides here. My girls were in the band when it was a tough state, when football players and cheerleaders would put on their helmets and pumps and perform at the halftime show. I've taught some of your children, and you know me as a teacher, who always puts students first. I believe this is the goal of the district. I just want to share some experiences that I have seen in students that participate in the current music program. The elementary years are when we need to build confidence and enthusiasm about school and learning. Middle school is too late, those are the hardest years. New classmates from other schools, new classes, new teens, new teachers, and just being that age. That is a lot to deal with for all students, even those with special needs. We all know middle school years are hard. If started in the elementary grades, they are more willing to try and will develop confidence in their ability before they reach the middle school. Students at HCE are gaming in so many ways. When I'm subbing in the library, I see them coming to check out their books since they're going to be enjoying their lessons, but they're also so excited about the new songs they just were working on that day in class. I see a student so shy that she struggles even saying hi, but she wants to perform her instrument in front of her class and does that with confidence. I've been in a classroom where students come into play for their former teachers and class with such pride. I've had students in the fourth and fifth grade ask me if I can come to their concert to see them play. I've seen those concerts where students play with such enthusiasm and smiles on their face. I have, isn't this our goal? So when they enter those stressful middle school years, they have that confidence? This is what we all want for our children, to have the desire and love to want to learn and not be afraid to try something new. This program can get back to what it was, because I think we now have dedicated teachers that can work together between all schools. The gain in just the past few years with the pride and skill levels at HCE has grown tremendously. Before and after-school programs are very, very difficult for parents because of their work schedules. For younger ones at home, they just can't provide transportation. Therefore, the student doesn't come first, even though parents would love that. You have the chance to change that. Starting in the middle school, eliminate all those students that aren't willing to take the risk at that age due to so many reasons out of our control, but you can control this opportunity.
Next time, thank you.
Give them a chance to strive and grow.
Jason?
Jason Rush, four zero three three, South Hundred and Fourth Street. Just wanted to say thank you to the board, I know at times you're not so thankful as well. I also wanted to say thank you to the administration and, of course, our quality music department as well. I believe letting students choose their instrumentals in fourth and fifth grade is the best option, option C. My opinion before in school lessons is an option that has not thoroughly been vetted. Litigistics and cost of providing busing is one major consideration. Putting elementary students on buses with middle and high school students is not a good idea. Providing extra buses at eighteen thousand dollars each is not fiscally responsible. Another consideration, equality. It's an often-used word, what equality is provided to non-bus students who don't have options. I also want to bring them to school early for band. Not every student comes from a traditional family setting. Not every parent has a choice to adjust their schedule. My opinion, eliminating the elementary instrumental program is not.
Thank you. Joe?
Joe Cholinski, fifty-two fifty-six, South Hundred and Fourth Street. It seems a lot to me, it seems like the fix is in to some degree. I've watched this conversation evolve and take shape in each of the sessions that we've talked about. And in each session, it seems like what I deem, but again, I'm a parent and I really want the music program to be kept as is or expanded, and so I'm a biases that way. So at each of the sessions, it seems like progress to me is being made, and then we take a step backwards at the start of the next meeting. And so we don't really get as far as we could if we would lead with the best idea. So I, I appreciate the work of the, of the board and I appreciate the work of the administration and the teachers. I appreciate all of those things. I understand that the circumstances are extremely difficult and there's a lot of moving pieces. But those moving pieces and the creativity in those things, that's why we elect competent people and why we pay competent administrators at staff and we pay, we pay and elect people to kind of deal with those complexities. And so I appreciate it, but I don't want to hear that it's hard anymore. I just, I just want what's best for the kids. And as you make your decision, there were some things I saw tonight that I just want to make sure kind of get pointed out. Number one, when looking at the percentages of participation, I would just ask that, instead of saying it's fifteen percent, that you consider the participation in other electives or similar things. We're not comparing fifteen percent to a hundred necessarily. You compare fifteen to the other things people are participating in. So fifteen can be diminished and seem like a small number, but how many people are doing the other things? Is the benchmark twenty-two percent and we have fifteen, that's good. Is the benchmark seventy-five and we have fifteen, that's not good. The other thing I would say is, the fourth grade is what appears is going to get chopped, which I hate. But there was one number on there that they're flying past and there's a lot of them. On one of the slides, it looked like thirty percent was participating. If I had a product I was going to sell to thirty percent of you, I would be rich. Like, thirty percent of the students, if I read this correctly, are participating and because it's difficult, we're going to get rid of that. I just, I have a hard time rationalizing that and it's difficult for me to see that happen. The only other thing I would like to note is something I've noted before and I've even noted on it earlier, thank you, is that concept, this whole thing to me is still a funnel. And we should be trying to encourage participation as early as possible so that we can maintain a strong program and have an impact on these children's lives starting as early as possible and going as long as possible.
Thank you. Chelsea?
Chelsea Bennerman, one zero three three, West Green, Hills Corners. I can do, thank you again for the consideration of the administration and all of our wonderful music teachers. I'm a parent of a second grader at HCE. And forgive me for sounding redundant, you know, I've emailed, I've talked before at meetings, but I am very passionate about keeping the instrumental music as part of the elementary school program. I don't want to envy that I have had for administration, obviously with the state federal regulation as well as the flow of the annual interest in the student population, that is going to be difficult. But, you know, to echo some other people, it's difficult to stand here and listen, oh, that might be difficult to navigate scheduling. I want to hear what's going to be in the best interest of our students. Also, music teachers are creative people by nature and I hope that administration and the board will consider their interests and insights to solve this problem. We've heard from many before as well as more this evening. And I just hope that we can, that you can figure out, you know, how to replace that teacher at Everton to give students the most opportunities possible. Parents like myself are obviously very passionate about this topic and we've heard from many from the beginning. And I hope that you continue to listen on any other topics that come up to what the community and the parents are saying. One of the concerns with the before and after-school program, again, as voiced earlier, is that there could be difficulties getting the students here. This is all, you know, in my head, written kind of before I heard about option C, so I really hope that, that that is a viable option and that we can make that work for our students. And then just finally, I just hope that Wendell doesn't always look to the surrounding communities to make choices for their students. Let's continue to strive for the very best for our own students. No matter what other districts we're doing, as we are very unique. And let's build a fabulous music program from the elementary up so that we can have other districts looking to us in the future. Thank you.
Andy and Karen?
All right, so it's almost time to get on to the voting. And I'd like to say that I thoroughly support and recommend Dr. Jones' suggestion to keep elementary music in the fourth grade, start elementary band in the fifth grade, and continue with our program as we have it and staff the, staff our schools as needed to make that happen. I'd like to make a very important point, and the reason that we're all here tonight is that this issue is not just a personnel issue, this is an issue that affects our entire community and it affects our school schedules and it affects the opportunities for our children. And that's why the entire board is here tonight and why everyone in from the community is here tonight to talk about this. Because this matters for us and for our kids. It is not only a personnel decision. So you have an option that Dr. Jones suggested that I think is perfectly acceptable to everyone here in the audience by the applies that I've heard for it. And so I'd like to recommend to the board that you start with that as your motion tonight. When we talk about, that's really almost everything I have to say. We talk, we talk about personalized learning, that means starting kids when they're ready for instruments. It doesn't mean we have to start in fourth grade or we have to start in fifth grade or that everybody has to be the same. When a kid is ready to start instruments, they can start working with an instrument and that's what personalized learning means, it's something we've set as a goal of our district. So if we need that, let's do it. Also, personalized learning means if you have an advanced student, you can move an advanced student up and have them work with the middle school and high school teachers so they can have an enriching experience that works for them. So we have opportunities to be creative, we have opportunities to make a difference for our kids, and we have opportunities to make our district stronger. Also, if you're looking at other districts, I really suggest that you take a look at Reveal, which starts the programs early and which is one best music education for the last three years in a row. So you don't have to look all over the state, you look for where the programs really work the best and model after those programs. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to five dash nine A. Would someone like to say a motion?
Saying a motion to, um, I'm trying to say this, I'm trying to change this one second. To go with option C, as it stands there, that's the point of discussion before we determine fifth or fourth, but as it stands there at fifth grade, with a whole lot of general music in fifth grade for band and orchestra. That would be my motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I would be in favor of moving into fourth grade, both band and orchestra.
At this point, I'd like to see what the staffing looks like, keeping it with orchestra for and fifth.
So I guess, Lisa or Lynn, why wasn't fourth grade included in this motion or in this option?
I think that was a capacity issue, we talked about that, the ability to stack both of those grade levels. Well, a couple of different reasons, because I had just gone through the fifth grade and when I found about IED, but it fell to the fourth grade. The other part of it honestly is, as, as we've talked with music teachers, we know that there are K-12 music standards and feel confident in fifth grade that we can handle the K-5 music standards by giving the kids an option by pulling them out of general music. Unclear if we can withstand on the fourth grade and still accomplish, as Monica briefly told you, everything we do in that, if we could do that in two grades, right? Because there is a continuum of curriculum that we cover, K-12. And so we are somewhat confident in the short amount that Monica recognizes that we could cover the general music curriculum that they need to cover by pulling out in fifth grade, but did not go through and say, what if we did that for two years in a row? What curriculum then would there be in terms of gaps? And stop honestly by saying, could we do it at fourth grade? Because, because of the timing of that. So I guess there would be that curriculum gap coverage, could we do that? That's, we didn't sit down and lay that whole piece out in terms of that staffing. I would have to check it, if it's possible at both of our elementary schools. Because of what we're doing right now for that rotation and the timing of it, in terms of instrumental music is not equitable in terms of the time, so I have to vet out if we did our offerings the way that we need to do them with this four-group rotation. Because understand, this four-group rotation is the same at Hales Corners and Edgerton. It's not because we're a three-section school at Edgerton and a four-section school. This is no longer by teacher. So at Edgerton, you will also have four groups that rotate. So what I share with the elementary principals, understand that that rotation that they have with three homeroom teachers right now, our Edgerton teachers actually have a prep during that because there's a three-section school. This model no longer aligns you, a homeroom teacher that aligns you to a four-section school. So we did not vet through the schedule implications. We know that at Edgerton and HCE, it's not the same, it's not the same piece of it. So I did not take this model down to the fourth grade to see if this piece will, that's the best, because I stopped.
So in essence, the fifth grade would be in a little early status to how our, our class and their system group. Oh, scheduling, yes.
Yeah, to some extent, yeah. And, and yeah, we had done fourth grade in terms of what's covered in general music from a curricular standpoint and a logistic standpoint, I just don't have those answers at this time. I'm not saying it can't be done, I'm just saying that would recur, require some progressive preparation.
If we went for the purpose of this meeting just for fifth grade, because we know in theory it could work, would that give us the leeway to make it necessary for elementary non-annual notices, but give us the time to make the research into a fourth grade work to then possibly change the preliminary non-annual to whatever it needs to be?
It would do that, it would, yes, it would do that.
Because if we went fourth grade and we couldn't make this thing whatsoever, whether that's, it's impossible to schedule, I know no one wants to hear that, but there are those things. There's those challenges of pulling out of, however many sections it is, but that would kind of put us in a bind at that point if you went fourth right now as opposed to going fifth.
Correct, so what, what you're suggesting, Kevin, is doable, it could buy more time between preliminary and figuring out if it can be done and we just scale back.
Does it allow the, do you, the principal resume for this schedule?
Can you get the middle and high school?
Correct.
For the most part, the only thing that we leave out there, and I guess at some point we can't sacrifice all middle and high school scheduling, because understand, when we schedule orchestra or when we schedule when one section of choir holds together the entire high school schedule, right? There's one section of choir, one section of orchestra and two bands. And those are sort of the linchpins of, the schedule is built from there, for those singles and sections. So if we build, we can build it, if we come back to say fourth grade can't work with current staffing, we have to use somebody else that may be more challenging. So I would say we're going to have to move forward with middle and high school scheduling regardless and, and, and hopefully that it can fit very similar to as it is now, but yes. We just can't delay any more moving forward with middle and high school schedules.
Answer? Okay, so at this point, yeah?
Comment, so it seems to me, I'm not sure what you mean about the gap in the academic standards or the goals or whatever in general music if we include fourth grade. It seems to me, the best I could gather in the comments we got from the teacher, that, that instrumental music would enhance their general music education, not attract from. So I'm not sure if you buy, I'm not, yeah, I know they're getting less instruction minutes in general music, but if they're, if they're being pulled out for a special basically that, for an elective in a sense, that actually enhances their general music experience, then I'm not sure where the gap is, except maybe for the kids that don't hold instruments.
No, so right now, because they get ninety minutes of music every four days and that's a combination of general a combination of general and instrumental piece of it, right? So all students get sixty minutes of general music right now, and that's where we're able to cover all the music standards. If some of them, let's say half of them, if it's forty percent or whatever it is, now don't have part of that general music, I don't know enough the daily activities and lessons in terms of if they're doing notes that year or in fourth grade, we all of a sudden do something. That's what I was saying, that we have to ensure that we can cover, cover whatever that is. And I think that would be, I'm right now on the spot to say that absolutely, there are other things that we do, like if it's not just reading notes or whatever the case is, like that we sit down. I'm not saying that it can't, but without a doubt, I just would hate to sit here and I was like, wow. I mean, I think we're flexible enough to say we might ever just rearrange things differently and make sure it's in here or here or whatever. So I think it's not feasible. It's just hard for me, I won't stand your public's idea absolutely then.
Well, that's, that's why I'm in favor of doing the, of expanding band down to fourth as opposed to retracting a lot of strings up to fifth, is because it's still, from what I gather, it sounds like it would enhance the overall music education as opposed to detract from it. And it gives us the opportunity to see where would the base name come from and if it comes from, probably have to adjust.
I would just say the other part of instrumentation to fourth grade, the musical sides is one of the things that we could have done too, but I think we did.
I meant the DeGallington bass player who learned, started spring bass at the age of five by standing on the kitchen table. Thanks for doing that. So the motion has been set to select option C, starting in fifth grade. We could add to explore the option of adding fourth grade, but with starting this, starting with this model and potentially adding the third down to it. How would we do that? Well, I mean, over the next. Several weeks. Next week, as they give more information. And at that moment, we've already said we're keeping it in elementary school. It's going to be a pullout in fifth grade, it's just a question of, can we also do fourth grade and program, whatever, positives, negatives, everything we presented to us. As long as we can reserve that option for future discussion, not for.
Yeah, I think yes, hopefully as we can through those options, given that the standard curriculum is yapping, yep.
Other part with this, I know we're already looking at curriculum, the game of curriculum, you need to keep that in this motion. This is just whether we keep elementary. Elementary instrumental. Okay, so all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Oppose? See none, motion carries. So six degrees.
Joe, fix the memory, I'm exactly saying that, I really do. I'm just like you, anyway, we're parents as well. Please, let me solve this that way. The other part is, this is a small piece of a large puzzle that we have to work at. It was a good example at the last meeting, after all, after the music part was done, everybody got left except for me and Peter Porte. But we had a stay after and figure out the rest of the district's business. So just keep that in mind that this is a small piece and it's, that we have a passion for and I get it. But we as board members, administration, need to look at the whole puzzle as well. Otherwise, we would not be doing the test here any good. Someone said in one of the emails, don't run this like a Fortune 500 company. We try and spend every dollar that we have, some years we spend more, some years we don't spend at all. I mean, one year we had twenty-six pregnancies that killed us. Got them baby, but I don't. But my point is, we're trying. It's us against them. We may not, we may not agree, but I never felt to be, I never personally thought that I was against you. Many of you have come up and talked to you or responded to your emails just by saying thank you. That's all I can do. We have a board policy that he's the only one that responds. If we're going to respond, he responds. There's a reason why we give him the title president. He does a lot of the stuff that we don't do. And I know John, that hurts him, but we have to give the power to him and then bring it to us and then we discuss it. So some of the people that don't come on a regular basis, maybe don't know how this business works, and it's not easy at times, but to fix the memory, that's just, that was good. And I appreciate all you people. Come next week when music's not on the list. See how many people are here? Not many. Thank you. Nobody clapping?
So just to understand the message you just delivered to all of us, in order for us to show proper respect, which I think a lot of us did when we got off from high school even a week ago, you're just asking that we assume that you're always having the best interest of the district and the students at heart. Which I think, I think the majority of us have, have said that. And perhaps with the motion, one or two of us have noted that the way in which the options are presented and they change all the time, a mystery to some of us based on our professional background, where we are used to surveys being developed in a much different fashion and the winnowing down occurring in a different way. So I really appreciate that you take the time to give us kind of insight on that. I think that makes a difference and it enables people to understand the issues and have the confidence that you want us to have in them. But again, I think you guys do a very big and important job. But I hear your challenge, which is we should sit here every week regardless of the program so, or at least more than, you know, just to show up for one thing, show up at least more often, so that you have the value of our insight and our input.
That as well, that as well as you can see that we have to deal with the business district, the whole, the whole apple. Not just a little piece here, yes, that's important and it's part of the puzzle.
Yeah, we have to be careful. So my message all along is that this wasn't intended to be the justice process, it was designed to be a conversation. The evolution as we've gone along is because of that conversation sheet that we received, right? We didn't have all the answers at the beginning. We didn't set out saying is that what we've said is the current system. People decided, no, 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 right? What we've said is the current system, we can't say this thing. That's been the message I've brought. So we just need to work from that. It was brought up a couple times about no one wants the program. We, we represent a large constituent base and not everybody is in favor of keeping elementary music, right? Not everyone is. So we have to balance what makes sense and that. So we're going to keep having this conversation. We want people involved, whether it's the band booster meetings or anything, right? We need that involvement to hear. The survey, right or wrong, it was a small part of a larger picture and any decision wasn't specifically made on that. So going forward, you know, we have to stay focused on the issues, now the personal attacks. We're all here for the same reason, it's to create the best learning experience for our students. We have to focus on that in talking through the issues. You know, it gets heated, it gets emotional, right? But it can't ever become personal because it's not, because everyone here values education and wants to make the best possible for our students. It's my thought is, now, I remember way back in high school doing an exercise where you were shipwreck somewhere and you had to prioritize what you thought you should keep on shipwreck to survive. Everybody did it. And then you had to get together in a group and actually look at it. And what research showed is that the groups always do better than the individuals kind of getting on stuff. So for me, starting off at this process and ending up where we did with something completely different than what we started with, means that we did that project. We worked together as a group, we listened, we got all the emails, we had medicine sessions and stuff that we wanted to hear back from. And I think that out of everything, I hope it gives at least the communities the confidence that we're trying to do this as best as we can within some limitations that we have, whether they're legal or what have you, but also trying to keep the goals of the people who we represent. So for me, having something that turned out completely different, I think is my.
What did you keep?
I screwed up because I wanted to go and find something that was just to say there, so. So I just want to end the run with it. So I know Dr. Olson has become the face of this, right? But I think it needs to be hammered home that she didn't create this situation, she didn't create, she walked into this, right? She inherited it. And instead of turning a blind eye, we saw the note from 2014 where a problem was identified and we collectively didn't solve it, right? That's not enough, that's not someone who wasn't even here then. So I think it's important that we remember that just because Dr. Olson or me or whoever is standing up here, it's not always just our fault, but we're standing in front of you saying, look, it's an issue, we've got to fix it, we can't ignore whatever it is, right? We'll face the music, whatever it is, the here, the email, whatever, because it's the right thing to commit to. So I just, again, coming back to that, suit and instance, right? We're all here for the same thing. Please, work with us. It may not always go away, but we need your help. Personal committee meeting is right after this. Alright, so I'll take a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Oppose and none, motion carries.